Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the public hearing for the Penn Township zoning ordinance. And with that, I'd like to call to order the meeting. And the first order of action will be to take a motion to appoint our solicitor, Michael Corns, as the moderator for this evening. Can I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Harrison, could I have a second? Second by Mr. Shul, all is in favor? Aye. Mr. Corns, supporting the jurors.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Corns, I'm the solicitor for Penn Township. Let me just give you a broad, brief overview of why we're here tonight, most of you probably already know. Today, tonight, we are having the public hearing for the final adoption of a zoning ordinance for the township of Penn. Basically, the township has had an ordinance that it has been using under a doctrine called pending ordinance status since October of 2014. That ordinance has not yet been formally adopted. So, we have moved forward with the process as required under Pennsylvania law, which required that ordinance go through multiple stages of review at the Township Planning Commission, the County Planning Department. And then finally, we are here today to take testimony regarding the ordinance. As you can see up here, we have a court report, because everything that is said tonight will go onto an official transcript. Before anyone offers any testimony, you will be sworn, so your testimony tonight will be under oath. The testimony we're going to be taking tonight is going to be any relevant testimony regarding any aspect of the Penn Township zoning ordinance and map. What is relevant testimony? Well, it can really be two categories of testimony. The first kind of testimony would be expert testimony, and we've had some individuals through various groups have contacted us to speak, and experts. Once those experts come out and will come up to speak, I will ask them just for their first, you know, 30 seconds or so, to very briefly lay out their credentials, so that if there's ever a question as to their qualifications, it's on the record. The other aspect of testimony that can be relevant would be factual testimony, and that is going to be coming from any township residents or taxpayers. So, if you're a resident or taxpayer of Penn Township with opinions on the ordinance, you don't have to be an expert, you're a resident here, so your opinion is relevant and can be put on the record. We are, at one point, we had talked about doing this in sort of chunks, in various aspects. As we got the speakers, basically, everyone was signing up for just one issue, so we're not going to break it up, we're just going to kind of go through the speakers that we have. Just a few rules we're going to have in place. Reminder, we're here to take testimony on the entire zoning ordinance. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Mr. Graziani is going to be in charge of keeping track of time, and because we are going to try to get this hearing, you know, keep this moving, we are going to adhere to that strictly. Experts, who have qualified as experts, may testify out to 10 minutes. Because we are taking evidence, all testimony is limited to discussions of the ordinance, this is not an open public comment section. So, if your testimony is about township, things about the township other than the ordinance, or if you engage in any sort of ad hominem or personal attacks, your testimony will be caught off. If testimony is becoming duplicative, many of you have the same opinions to act, what we're going to ask is, after the opinion has been put on the record, if subsequent speakers would be able to just register their face agreed with a previous speaker, we will have you to do so. So, if one person gets up, provides testimony, and then there are another four or five speakers behind them who agree with that position, you can do that. Written statements will be accepted, so if you have a written statement that you want to make part of the record, just bring it up here, and we will give it to the court reporter. It'll be marked as an exhibit and also made part of the record. However, if you are going to, going to do that, we're not going to also have you read the testimony, it'll go in, it'll go in once. Finally, we just would ask that the audience members, when you're not speaking, please be quiet, do not engage in outside conversation, just please turn off your cell phones. It's important for several reasons, give respect to the speaker, but also, from a practical standpoint, it's very important, the court reporter is going to be transcribing every word, and it's important that she be able to hear all of the speakers. With that said, one other thing to remember is, as if you've been coming to our township meetings, you may be aware, it's been, it's important for the township that we get a formally adopted zoning ordinance in place. We haven't had one now for several years, which could open the township up to liability. However, we are aware that there are issues with this ordinance, and we've already started the process before this ordinance is even adopted, of retaining, you know, a expert to move forward with a phase two of the ordinance where we're going to go back and be making some changes. So, anything you, any information you provide tonight, even if it's not incorporated in this version of the ordinance, you know, would be considered as part of a, as part of a phase two. With that, I'm going to then open it up to our very first speaker, which is Dr. Nathan McElroy, Associate Professor of Chemistry at IUP. Now, what I'm also going to do, Mr. or Dr. McElroy, we're going to have sworn in, to make it easy, if anyone else in the audience who is going to be providing testimony, if you stand, we can have you all sworn in at the same time. So, if you're planning on testifying tonight, please stand.
Yeah. No. Sir, I'm a testifying. I want to give the truth and all the reasons that we found this through, and I'm going to go on right there. Please answer both questions.
Can I do it?
Thank you.
And with that, I will give it over to Dr. McElroy.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. I was asked, come here tonight to speak a little bit about the ongoing water testing project that is occurring at the Beaver Run Reservoir, to give you a little bit of introduction. So, the reservoir is, and the adjacent property is owned by the Municipal Authority of Westmoreland County, or MOC, as all refer to it from here on in. There have been several traditional vertical wells around that property for years, but around 2010, Consol Energy, which is majority leaseholder of at least the northern part of the reservoir, approached MOC, so let them know that they would be beginning unconventional or Marcellus-style drilling on their property. And so, to that, to that date, MOC had been going out on an annual basis and testing water quality parameters at several sites in and around the reservoir on an annual basis. They felt with the beginning of Marcellus extraction activities around the reservoir, and at the time, several controversies that were going around about Marcellus drilling, that it would be beneficial to MOC and the general public and their customers to have a third party come in and be able to provide a little bit more water quality testing and other activities around the reservoir. IUP was one of the groups that MOC met with and described their parameters. We presented a proposal for a one-year testing project, which they seemed pleased with. And so, in the spring of 2011, roughly May, IUP faculty and students began testing the water quality parameters in and around the Beaver Run Reservoir. The first well, I believe, was hydro-fracture or fracked in May, and we began our water testing parameters in June. So, there really wasn't any ongoing fracking activity when we began our water testing parameters. This is important because it gives us a sense of the background of chemical levels and other parameters that we test for before a major fracking goes underway. The lake itself is owned and run by MOC, they provide municipal water to over 130,000 customers in the Westmoreland County area, and perhaps some of you receive that water in your homes. They were concerned about, obviously, the hydro-fracturing and other extraction activities, that there might be some chance of disruption of the quality of surface water, and so we began our study. To give you an idea of what we do, my partner and I, the, I'm in the chemistry department, my research partner, Dr. Brian Oakey, is in the geography and regional planning department. He and his students, on a quarterly basis, generally March, June, September, and December, visit the Beaver Run site and the adjacent areas, and they take field measurements, that includes pH, which is the level of acidity, total dissolved solids, and conductivity, and temperature around all of the existing well pads. There are currently eight well pads on the northern end of the reservoir, including one adjacent to the water treatment facility. Currently, there are 47 Marcellus wellheads and one Ubica wellhead. Dr. Oakey and his students go out on a quarterly basis, as I said, and they do field testing around each pad and any runoff and any coming from those pads. And then they also collect one-liter bottles of water from surface runoff streams and tributaries, if you will, around the entire watershed. We also collect now seven samples from the reservoir itself, we do that three times annually. They take the boat off in the winter because the lake freezes, so we do those three times a year. Those samples are gathered from approximately five feet off the bottom of the lake. The water samples are returned to Indiana University of Pennsylvania, IUP, in which case, myself and my students then take these water samples and analyze them for a host of different parameters. We currently look at total dissolved solids, that gives us an idea of what may be running off, on surface, not only natural but man-made activities. We look at the alkalinity of the water, this is the ability of water to neutralize acids, whether it be acids, rhino, acid mine drainage, or acid rain. We take a look at the levels of six different salts, so for example, chlorides, bromides, fluorides, nitrates, phosphates, and salphates. And we also analyze the presence of 12 different metals. Some of them are ubiquitous, such as calcium, iron, magnesium, we find those in limestone and other minerals. But we're also looking for heavy metals that may lead to energy extraction activities, such as strontium, barium, mercury, lead, cadmium, and a few others. In addition to that, our lab testing procedures, although we're not, for example, an E.P.-certified lab, we're a university, we do follow the standard protocols that are used by the industry for quality assurance and quality control, to make sure that we're getting the best results possible. To date, after five years of study, which we're writing up a review for MOC for the end of the month, our surface water study has not shown any attributable change in surface water quality to the fracturing, fracking activity that is going on around the Beaver Run Reservoir. This is obviously a concern for MOC with the number of pads that surround Municipal Authority's reservoir, many of them within 1,000 feet of municipal water drinking source. This is the only place in Pennsylvania, and probably the United States, where this level of activity is occurring so closely to municipal water sources. So, they were obviously very concerned, that's why they brought us on board to take a look at this. The other thing that they wanted was to make sure that everything was as transparent as possible, that for that reason, we've created a public website where we place all of our findings, and hopefully enough descriptions of all of our findings, so that the general public, who may have no interest at all, or even scared of chemistry, can at least hopefully go on and find out a little bit more about your water quality. I'll give that address in a few minutes, and I'll leave some parts behind if people want to take a look at that further. We do not test injection wells, or deep wells, or groundwater. We also are not currently testing for organic materials, that is, organic chemicals that the companies may be using in their fracturing. And we do not test for radioactivity. We have met with a local citizens group, their name is, as you can remember, it was the Westmoreland Marcellus Citizens Group, or something similar to that, which they raised concerns about those types of testing that is not being done. We are currently working on seeing if we can expand our parameters at IUP to meet some of those needs. Regardless, anything that we test can be found publicly available on our website for your review, and feel free to contact any of us on the website if you have questions about that. One of the challenges that we face in looking at the water quality is that we have decades, if not a couple centuries' worth of energy extraction activities in this area. We find almost all of our samples, regardless of their position on the reservoir, we will find levels of certain metals, such as strontium and barium, that do come from deeper in the earth. Typically, those are going to come from coal extraction activities. There are a couple places on the Beaver Run Reservoir where there are abandoned mine drainage issues with acidic water, higher iron, higher aluminum, and other metals that do show up. Those existed prior to the fracturing going on. There's also a lot of human activity around the reservoir, a lot of winter maintenance, for example, so we do see seasonal variations in, for example, chloride levels. If you put salt on the road, you're going to get more, higher chloride levels in the water that follow it. So, there's already a lot going on, previous to that, from other human activity, and so trying to attribute any additional activity from fracturing alone can be a difficult process. However, all of our results to date, in talking with MOC, we feel that we have not seen any visible increase, other than seasonable variations of the analytes that we test for, that they just believe that fracturing is a causing the problem with surface water quality. I cannot speak to organics, I cannot speak to radioactive, I cannot speak to groundwater. But from what we test, we haven't seen any change in surface water quality. With that, I will provide the address of our project website. I encourage anyone who wants to learn more about this project, including the results of our past five years, we're updating constantly, recorded that we go out, and as far as we know, this project will continue indefinitely, as long as there are energy extraction activities around the Beaver Run. And as I said, we might try to add on some other tests. We do also have continuous monitoring in certain streams called level monitors, we have that data, and I have another colleague at IUP, the business department, who's starting some air quality monitoring at the Beaver Run on certain pads and compressor stations. The project website can be found at lambic, that's L-A-M-B-I-C dot N-S-M dot IUP dot E-U. If you go to that site, it will bring you up to our project website with all the information we have there. Again, it's continuously updated with new information. And if anyone has any questions about anything on the website, or you want to learn more about the project or chemistry in general, you may email me at Nate, N-A-T-E, at IUP dot E-U. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Smith from the Clean Air Council, and just to have the sort of lineup, I'll have the next speaker get, you know, be ready right behind him, which is Dr. Michael McCauley from WVU.
Hello, my name is David Smith, thank you very much for the opportunity to present testimony to you today. I am a community outreach coordinator for Clean Air Council, the largest Pennsylvania-based environmental nonprofit. The council has been working to achieve its core mission, to protect everyone's right to breathe clean air for over 50 years. The council is a leader on oil and gas land use and zoning issues. The council's attorneys are currently litigating a landmark case in the 6th Township Butler County that challenges the zoning ordinance, or among other things, opening up more than 90% of the township to unconventional gas development. The council has assigned communities and organizations across the Commonwealth on gas-related zoning issues. The state law will read was prepared with the assistance of Clean Air Council's legal team. The proposed ordinance 912-2016, Penn Township's treatment of unconventional gas development is frankly flawed, mostly troubling the mineral extraction overlay injects unconventional gas development and industrial activity into a non-industrial zoning district. This undercuts the core function of zoning, which is to separate incompatible usages. Last year for months, this meant neighboring residents were exposed to noise and light pollution all day and all night for weeks. Further, there is risk of industrial accidents, there will be fires, spills, and blowouts, accidents which would require the evacuation of residents in up to a two-mile radius, and it's important to keep in mind a couple of key facts. First, these impacts are multiplied by the number of well sites present. Many residents would not be subjected to harms from just one site, but will instead have multiple well sites in their neighborhood. And two wells, and two wells can be re-drilled and refracked, undercutting claims that all these activities are just temporary. A growing body of peer-reviewed evidence shows that unconventional gas development has significant adverse impacts on our health and environment. Perhaps most troubling, every study that has looked at unconventional care health has found that is harmful. Right here in Pennsylvania, studies have found that gas development is associated with asthma, exacerbations, cardiac hospitalizations, and birth complications. The fact that unconventional gas development is industrial shouldn't be controversial. The industrial itself, the industry itself acknowledges it. In fact, happens quite, a spokesman for the Marcellus Shale Coalition said, "When incidents occur, as they do in an industrial process, and as rare as they may be, corrupted actions taken to mitigate future events." Undebility zoning is about separating incompatible usages. It's about putting usages where they belong, or as the Supreme Court comfortably put it, making sure the pillage isn't in the park. Through proper zoning, a township can avoid conflicts where one person's use of property impairs the ability of another to use his or her property. Where unconventional, unconventional gas development is allowed near residential community, the light, noise, air, and water pollution impairs the ability of residents to use and enjoy the property. Further, when industrial activity like unconventional gas development is injected into a non-industrial district, just as it's, just as is proposed here, those who were expected to live in or near a non-industrial zone will have their expectations unconsequential disturbed. Putting unconventional gas development where it does not belong is precisely what was at issue in the Act 13 litigation. The state legislature was told it's unconstitutional to industrialize the state with gas development. It is no more constitutional for towns to attempt to achieve the same result. It would be a mistake to attempt and in run a rapid production support established in the Act 13 litigation. Here, the proposed ordinance would open up a huge swath of Penn Township's unconventional gas development. The MEO adds unconventional gas development as a use by special exception to the rural resource district, and it appears there is at least one instance where gas development is allowed in a mixed-density residential district. The purpose of a rural resource district is to provide land for continued agricultural operations, resource management, timber harvesting, outdoor recreation, public and private conservation areas, low-density single-family residential, and compatible support usages. Among the principal uses in the districts are homes, daycare facilities, and schools. Unconventional gas development is incompatible with these types of uses. Although gas development alongside schools and daycare facilities is particularly troubling as children are more vulnerable to pollutants and should be afforded greater protection. In reviewing an overlay district, the Commonwealth Court wrote, "The purpose of an overlay district is to create specific and targeted provisions that conserve natural resources or realize development objectives without unduly disturbing the expectations created by existence zoning ordinance. Providing for unconventional gas development in a district in which industrial activities were not allowed unduly disturb residents' expectations and put them in harm's way." A couple of additional provisions of the proposed ordinance require comment. The proposed ordinance provides for a 600-foot setback from well sites. This does not reflect a safe distance grounded in the available peer-reviewed research. Despite its safe purpose, the infill overlay does not address the problem. The infill overlay reports to provide a healthy and safe buffer, but based on the review of the official township zoning act, it appears to do nothing to increase distances from unconventional gas development activity. Finally, it is unclear which noise provisions apply to unconventional gas development. The performance standards provide noise limits, but the ordinance does not specify which limits apply to gas development. Noise complaints are all too common in areas of intense gas development, and the effects on health from elevated noise levels are real. The loss of sleep and stress caused by noise at all hours causes significant harm. In summary, the council strongly encouraged you to reconsider the treatment of unconventional gas development in the proposed ordinance. Unconventional gas development is industrial activity, and the township's zoning must reflect its industrial nature. Due to this defect, it is the council's belief that proposed ordinance should be significantly overhauled to bring in line with sound zoning practices and to ensure that the zoning protects health and welfare of Penn Township residents. Thank you very much for your time.
No, we're not, this is, we're doing a transcript, we don't applaud, please. Next is Dr. Michael McCauley from WVU. After that, be ready, Jessica Rose from REIT, again, nothing in the audience.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Michael McCauley from West Virginia University. I am Associate Professor and Interchange Department of Occupational and Environmental Health Sciences in the School of Public Health care. I have a PhD in environmental health from Duke University, from Massachusetts, Canadian Engineering from West Virginia University. And I formerly worked for National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, which is part of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of federal government. And I have been recently doing research on air emissions that are associated with hydraulic fracturing operations and Marcellus shale drilling operations. I'll be moving on soon to looking at Utica shale. We have two experimental wells that we're planning. One is already started, it's the Marcellus shale well in Worden Township, West Virginia. There will be a Utica shale well being built somewhere in the area by a state that's collaborating on this. I also performed work for the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection, looking at air exposures at the setback distance in West Virginia of 625 feet. The results from that can be found in reports that are on the School of Public Health's website, under the Department of Occupational and Environmental Health Sciences. So, those reports are available there, if you want to download them, there's six or seven pages worth of data and information, which is a lot to go through. Let me see if I can summarize. For the air emissions, there is no good setback distance. You can't rely on a setback distance to protect the population. The reason for that is, not only do you have activity on the well pad, you have activity coming to and from the well pad in the form of heavy duty diesel trucks. It's been estimated by the state of Maryland that there are from 5,000 to 15,000 truckloads per well pad are associated with well pad development and pan operation. That's a lot of truck traffic, it's equivalent to what you see at the interstate. And essentially, if you put a well pad into town, you're basically running an interstate through it into the neighborhoods. So, you have to take that into consideration, you can't just ignore the truck traffic that are part of the industrial operations. You can, though, control what comes out of the tailpipes, and so, I'd like to propose that you take a look at putting an ordinance in with your zoning to control the issues from the trucks. Specifically, the emissions that I'm most concerned about as a toxicologist are the ultra-fond particle emissions from the tailpipes of these vehicles. Diesel exhaust, which I studied actually when I was with the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, is composed of particles that are less than 0.2 micrometers in size. For comparison, human hair is about 100 micrometers in diameter, so you can tack a stack anywhere from 500 to 1,000 of these particles across the diameter of your hair. They're very tiny. They, in the literature, whether in the study, they seem to cause inflammatory effects in the human body and in the bodies of animals to which they are exposed. These inflammatory effects can lead to all sorts of diseases, but the ones that are most common are asthma and cardiovascular disease. And in fact, what we're seeing in the papers that are currently being published, particularly the most, two most recent ones by Charles Hopkins University researchers in Pennsylvania, were in fact adverse birth outcomes and asthma. We believe that we've seen cardiovascular disease, and in fact, because we've studied ultra-fond particles with other kinds of operations, including mountain top removal activities, where we saw epidemic rates of cancer and cardiovascular disease, as well as the adverse asthma. We're concerned that these might begin cropping up, and we've seen in publications where We're concerned that these might begin cropping up, and we've seen populations where in fact, the diesel traffic is increased. So even though the state does not have regulations for the emissions of these ultrafine particles from the diesels, I believe it's possible that the counties and in fact, even townships may be able to do the monitoring and validation of these, particularly if they work together with surrounding counties and townships. In summary, I believe that if you ignore the truck traffic, you're ignoring a major source of the potential health effects that are being seen. And in the literature, when people have looked at populations living next to interstates, the kinds of diseases that they've seen are exactly the ones that they're starting to report around hydraulic fracturing operations. So if the state does not work with you to get these ordinances in place, at least when a truck turns onto a county road or truck turns onto a township road, they should have a sticker saying they contest certified to a certain level of emissions from the tailpipe. And that's probably within your purview from my understanding of Pennsylvania for a long time. But I'm not in the front. And that pretty much finishes what I have to say. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica Rose from Reed Smith, followed by Lindsay Appleman from Noise Solutions Incorporated.
Hi, my name is Jessica Rose, I'm an attorney with Reed Smith, here on behalf of my client, Apex Energy LLC. In lieu of providing testimony, Apex has chosen to submit written comments. Apex would like to stay on the record as objection to the consideration of unconventional oil and gas operations under Sections 190407, 19635, and 190641. As being unconstitutionally based, granted by the Oil and Gas Act, exceeding the authority of the Pennsylvania municipalities, planning homes, and in violation of Apex's constitutional rights protected by the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. Mr. Rosani already has a copy of our written comments, but today I brought the original as well as copies. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lindsay Appleman from Noise Solutions Incorporated.
Good evening. So I'm from Noise Solutions, we are a company here in Pennsylvania, we serve the tri-state region. We are manufacturing facilities about 55,000 square feet, we're located in Sharon, Pennsylvania. We employ 50 employees in that area. Basically, what we can do for our workers is when they are in the stages of planning a facility, we can help them predict what the noise impact of that facility is going to be. So as soon as they have the location specified, we put it specified, we can run a theoretical model, help predict the noise that's current at that facility. You know, so then we can help determine if that facility is going to comply with any regulations of the site-specific locations that they're working with, to tell them if they will be compliant or not. If it's going to show an non-compliant situation, then we can work with them in a few ways. We can help them orientate the facility to lessen the impact if it's close to a residential area. We can also help them on the engineering side, help them engineer the equipment upfront, so it's quieter before it's actually placed in the field. Or we can also help them determine what aftermarket noise control will be required. So that can be, you know, sound walls, a lot of the mic dealers along some of these roads. And we manufacture, design, and install them all locally in Pennsylvania, so everything is in-house.
Excuse me for a second, if you can access, speaking of the microphone, change, because I cannot roll over here for a second.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Matt, should I start over?
No, no worries.
No, okay. So basically that, that we can help companies be proactive before they put a facility into construction, as far as the noise impacts to surrounding residential areas. And then after, you know, we do the engineering, we determine what noise control is needed, we can guarantee that the facilities will meet any local noise ordinances or requirements that they need to meet. And I guess that pretty much sums up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Wilson from Trinity Consultants, followed by Jeff Walensky from PG Newdham Associates.
I have a bachelor's degree in environmental sciences from MIT, and I've spent about 20-plus years in the environmental consulting arena, with the majority of that time doing air quality work. I work for a firm that is the premier air quality consulting firm in the United States. We have offices across the country, as well as overseas, and our primary focus area, again, is on air quality permitting and compliance. My testimony today is really to provide an overview of the national and state regulations that would pertain to the natural gas industry in particular, with a focus on the drilling and operation of unconventional wells. As you had imagined, air quality regulations are very complex, so I'm going to give you a very high-level overview of that today. What we need to really understand from a big-picture standpoint is that there are various tiers and layers of regulation and requirements that apply to these types of operations. From a federal level, the Federal Clean Air Act regulates air quality standards for all types of sources across the country, and that's a minimal air quality standard that needs to be met. And from that framework, there are provisions in place for protecting the air quality for certain types of industries, for new sources as well as modified sources. And there are specific standards also written to address hazardous air cleans, or the types of air toxins that you heard mentioned earlier. From that framework, the federal government delegates the responsibility for permitting those sources and for enforcement down to the state level for certain types of facilities. For the facilities that are considered minor sources, where, which would typically be a well pad or well operation, most of those responsibilities would trickle down to the state level. And the state can have requirements that are more stringent than the federal government, but no less stringent. And so what you see is a layering of requirements, federal and state, and occasionally also local, that layer upon each other to set requirements for, for air quality. In Pennsylvania, there are basically two types of permitting processes. There are, it's a two-step process, so the construction phase is permitted separately from the operating phase for a facility. In certain cases, for certain types of operations, they do streamline that process. So for many oil and gas operations that qualify as minor sources, they have the general permit, which basically functions as a single permitting process to authorize both the construction and the operation of that facility. The types of sources that you might see at these sites that would be regulated by the government would include the temporary and mobile sources that you've heard about, the trucks, the engines that drive those trucks and that equipment are subject to federal machine standards. So the manufacturer of those engines must meet those standards when they build those engines. And then you also have a whole host of requirements for the permanent or stationary emission sources that will remain at the, at the site once the fracking and blowback and all of the construction phase is complete. So these are some of the types of sources you might see there. Not all of these sources would be at every well. We've heard a lot about different studies that have been conducted. There are literally hundreds of studies across the country that have been conducted related to shale gas development. In particular, these three I just pointed out because they're here in Pennsylvania. The last one is in a pretty densely active shale gas development area. But these are all air quality-related studies that you can refer to if you're looking for more information about the kind of findings that have been published. Just to give you an idea of the number and complexity of regulations that currently affect well sites, you can see here, by source type, a full list of federal regulations that apply. In addition to that, hopefully has their own state requirements, that again, would be layered upon those federal requirements, to make sure that air quality standards, not only at the national level, but also protected at the state level, are being met. And so these are the ones that are currently on the books. Some of the types of requirements associated with those include things like capturing the gas that's vented during well completion, and recovering or reusing that gas where it's safe to do that. There are emission standards for the engines. There are also work practice requirements around those to make sure that the engines not only are manufactured properly, that they're, that they're operated and maintained in a way that minimizes emissions over the life of the engine. The last one are leak detection and repair requirements. These are relatively new requirements that have been rolled out for this industry that require operators to monitor and repair any leaks that are found promptly. Additional federal requirements include things like gas-driven pneumatic devices having to be designed to have low bleed or zero-bleed design so that they're actually not venting emissions during their normal operation. There are control requirements for some types of sources like storage tanks and refrigeration units. And a significant number of notification, monitoring, and reporting requirements, and all of the records and reports that are submitted to either the state or the federal government are a matter of public record. In addition to those federal requirements, there are a number of state requirements. Again, these go above and beyond what the federal requirements are. So in Pennsylvania, there are engine emission standards that are on the order of 50% lower than what EPA has established, so Pennsylvania has gone beyond that. Additional testing requirements beyond what EPA would require, Pennsylvania has implemented a year. And control levels for certain types of storage tanks are actually at a considerably lower threshold, so controls would be required for storage tanks in Pennsylvania that might not be required elsewhere. Again, leak detection and repair program in Pennsylvania is perhaps a step ahead of what EPA has been doing at the federal level, so Pennsylvania has already taken additional steps to try to address the shale gas development activities in PA. There are also state requirements regarding visible emissions and odors that are perceptible beyond the property line. EPA did not address those as part of their air quality regulations, but Pennsylvania has pulled those in to their state requirements. One additional thing that is done in Pennsylvania that's a bit unique is that all operators in the state of Pennsylvania have to report their actual air quality emissions from all of their sites and operations on an annual basis to the state. That's for any site, any source, regardless of size. So most, in most states, that reporting is only done at certain thresholds for larger facilities. In Pennsylvania, everyone is, is doing that. Just to give you an idea of additional future regulations that are currently being discussed and in development, US EPA is in the process of issuing a very comprehensive information collection request. This is a complex, comprehensive survey that they're going to be sending to all natural gas operators across the US, and they will collect some additional information from those operators about the number of sites, the types of operations that they have. From that initial survey, they will send out a more detailed survey to certain types of facilities and certain operators that they select, in which they will be seeking very detailed information. And all of that data will be used to craft new regulations that are targeting methane emissions specifically. So that process is, is going on currently. In addition to that, the governor has introduced a four-point plan here in Pennsylvania, again, targeting methane regularly, or methane emissions specifically. Part of that effort will include a new general permit for unconventional wells. In Pennsylvania, currently, most wells are exempt from air permitting requirements if they meet a very specific set of criteria. This new general permit will be a way for the state to have a more formalized process for documenting the permitting of those well sites. They're going to be upgrading, if you will, the current general permit for compressor stations, and then there are some additional requirements that they are pulling together as part of this planning. And then the last one is just that the EPA has recently reduced the ozone national ambient air quality standard in 2015, and so we do expect that states in the ozone transport region, where we're located here in the mid-atlantic, will need to take some further steps to reduce ozone, which will directly impact this industry, I expect.
And 10 minutes expired. Next is Jeff Walensky from PG Newdham Associates, followed by Brad Liking from New Peak Associates Incorporated.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Walensky, I'm from Newdham Associates, I'm a licensed professional geologist in the Commonwealth. I have over 25 years of hydrogeology, hydrogeology experience related to environmental-related issues, but also oil and gas and water supply development-related issues. What I, what I want to talk about this evening is in regards to Pennsylvania oil and gas regulations that are existing, but also that are changing here in the, in the very, very near future, how it relates to groundwater protection measures. Some of the first, I can explain. The, the, the couple of items I'd like to talk about is two separate subchapters of Chapter 78, the oil and gas regulations. First, Subchapter C, the Environmental Protection Performance Standards. These new regulations are going to be promulgated likely this fall. These proceedings have been going on for some time, and well documented through the newspapers and then through the public. The public has had great deals of involvement, all stakeholders have been involved. These regulations are very, very prescriptive and much more protective of groundwater in the environment from the previous, from the previous regulations. Subchapter D, the well, well drilling operation and plugging activities, was revised back in 2011, and those, the regulations are likely to start for revision proceedings either late this year or early, early 2017. I know the department has had a lot on their plate, getting their Subchapter C regulations in place, but they also promised that Subchapter D would, would follow them in very, very short order. Things that I'll, I'll talk about here is just with, with Subchapter C, the, the, basically covers specific environmental protection issues and due diligence efforts that, that operators have to, have to go through either before, or, or during, or after, after drilling, st, well stimulation, well construction activities. And, and Subchapter D does cover the actual drilling, planning, casing, schedules, cementing up and all of these. It's very, very important for any operator, knowing any information about groundwater and surface water use in a targeted area to ensure that they're, they're planning things properly and doing things responsibly from the standpoint of oil and gas resource development. That's what I'm saying. One of the key items of, of, from the standpoint of groundwater protection in my, my mind, is, is the section of, of Subchapter C, it's called Protection of Water Supplies. It's 78A51, covers, it's, it covers most, it covers the unconventional wells, where if there is a, if there is a complaint lodged, and the department is involved and the DEP is involved, liability is presumed, presumed, or the operator is basically presumed guilty if, if impact was, was within 12 months of the completion or alteration of, of any well, and within 2,500 feet of, of the water supply. Doesn't mean that outside those parameters, the department would not, would not follow through on, on any complaint, but those are the parameters with what they, what their report would admit. Like I said, the operator is presumed guilty and must, and the operator must provide a temporary source of, of water to the property until either the complaint is resolved, or if a water supply is, is necessary, the water supply needs to be restored or replaced. I'll skip to that, that third bullet item there, that's a key, key component of that section. Go back a second, please. Thank you. The, the quality, I'm going to go into quotes here, right from the Rex. The quality, I'm going to quote here, right from the Rex, "Quality of the restored or replaced water supply will be deemed adequate if meets standards established under the Pennsylvania State Drinking Water Act where it's comparable to the quality of water that exists prior to pollution. If the water quality is better than these standards." It's very prescriptive, more prescriptive than any other industry act or in commonwealth. And it's a pretty significant change that I'll talk about in these next two examples. Simple example, a homeowner has a baseline survey of a given iron, as an example, in his water well of .2 milligrams per liter. Secondary drinking water standard of iron is .3 milligrams per liter. The homeowner has a complaint. The department and the DEP and the operator investigate the complaint, determine that it was because of the oil and gas activity. The operator is actually responsible for restoring that supply back to .2 milligrams per liter, back to that baseline, that baseline concentration of iron, which is certainly better than the drinking water standard. Next slide, please. And then conversely, on this, this is a pretty significant part of the change in this section. With a, if I use the example of iron with pre-drilling survey of .6 milligrams per liter, drinking water standard for iron is .3. We go through that same complaint with finding out that the operator has been found positive the issue here. The operator is actually responsible for replacing and restoring that water supply back to the drinking water standard, actually better than what the property owner had before To add on to that section, like I said, it's a very, very important section of the newly revised regulations. There actually has been a water supply restoration work group that's been established to weed out a very well-thought-out technical guidance document that's still ongoing. Actually, part of that work group, part of a stakeholder group that's been working with the DEP on draft of this technical guidance document, but basically outlines processes and techniques for restoring a water supply either on a temporary or permanent basis. But I'm expecting that this draft technical guidance document will be out here very, very shortly, and actually, the public will have an opportunity to comment on this document. A few other real quick items regarding what I feel are very key, new regulatory changes within Subchapter C that are protective of groundwater. Pre-drilling surveys, there have been some nuances and some changes to the explanation of the baseline testing requirements of water supply. This is the next section, area review, is a new section to the regulations where operators are required to do a due diligence on abandoned, orphaned, plugged, active and inactive oil and gas wells. And there's also a technical guidance document being outlined for this procedures. And then the last bullet item is reporting releases. Basically addresses spills and releases on and off-site. Regulation is going to follow the Pennsylvania Land Recycling Program or the Act Two Program. This is a, the Act Two Program is a voluntary program with the exception of two portions of two programs. And that's the underground storage tank program and the oil and gas program. They are not voluntary, it is fully involuntary. So very, very tough regulations to uphold, and that's part of the upcoming requirement. To cover Subchapter B, the well construction, to ensure, I think this is a powerful, the second bullet, I just kind of put a powerful statement, to ensure that the wells are being drilled, being constructed, being cemented, being stimulated properly, and to ensure all environmental health and safety measures are being followed. Subsection A of 7873, like I said, this section will likely be changed next year. What I have right from the section, the operators shall construct and operate the well in accordance with this chapter, ensure the integrity of the wells maintained, and health, safety, environment, and property are protected. I think that's a very, very powerful statement within that section. There are specifics regarding planning out the drilling of well. You just don't go out and not a lot of thought is brought into it. Certainly, the environmental aspects, groundwater protection is a big part of the planning procedures, but those procedures have to go in front of the department prior to even thinking about receiving a permit, limitations, many procedures in plans, along with the standards for the materials used in this process are covered in several sections within Subchapter D. That includes, like I said, the cementing of the conductor casing, surface casing, pole protective casing, intermediate casing, and production casing. There's a lot of protective strength to ensure that we're having proper protection of health saving of the property. Next slide, please. Last slide here is part of Subchapter B, and this has been pretty significant changes. There's actually a sample integrity assessment testing that's required for unconventional wells for four times per year. This, the MIA testing short circuits any potential integrity issues and requires remedial access to look if there's any issues that are there.
Sir, your containment has expired. Thank you. Our next speaker is Brad Leighton from New Peak Incorporated, followed by Ryan Grove from Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project.
Good evening. My name is Brad Leighton of New Peak. I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about containment policy and regulations and BMPs. So let's go ahead and flip to that first slide. Secondary containment is the practice of installing a means of catching anything that could possibly spill before it hits the ground. So secondary containment, safeguarding method in addition to a primary containment system. Any tank that's out there has walls that is holding the fluid. If those walls are considered to be containing the fluid, containment that is under it would be secondary containment. These containers are specific in size for the equipment that is put on them. Some capacity should contain 10% of the volume of total containers or the total volume of the largest container whichever is greater. So if a tank holds 100 barrels, we have to contain 110. The free board in the containment has to be able to contain any precipitation that may land on it also. So in general, containment will address typical failure mode, a containment company will address typical failure mode in the most likely quantity, and the containers can be passive or active. Good. Excellent. Regulations are both federal and state, which seems to be a theme here in the last couple speakers. There's layers to the regulations that we have to go through. So the advisory commissions and boards of PA, DEP have implemented stronger regulations than what the federal government says is necessary. The DEP has gone above and beyond those regulations. So federal, some of the federal regulations, the SPPC has put in place to monitor plants to prevent oil spills at facilities. Anything that is oil-like, oil and water mixtures, anything that is 1,320 gallons above ground storage capacity, anything that has the potential to reach inadmissible waters, and it defines oil pollution as a sheen on the water. These facilities can be portable or permanent. The RCRA restricts hazardous waste collection and storage. It defines the characteristics and listed hazardous wastes. The NEPDES defines oil pollution as a sheen on the water. This entity regulates stormwater discharges from construction sites of one acre plus, industrial facilities, and municipalities. Consider sediment to be the most common pollutant. So they're saying that sediment is more common than oil. Now, the DEP of PA recommends reporting a spill or release of more than five gallons of a regulated substance to the surface of the ground. This is pre-water. The federal said that we had to report when there was a sheen on water. PA says we have to report if it touches the ground. Our goal, and every DEP's goal, is to not let it hit the ground. That is why the containment regulations are in place. These recommendations, they recommend notifying if a spill or release exceeds 42 gallons in the competent secondary containment. So even if it is spilled in containment, we still have to report it. We have 24 hours to remove the spilled material from the containment. When spilled onto the ground, the material is usually either residual waste or hazardous waste. That's why we are in the business of containing it before it hits the ground. Act 13 of 2012, unconventional well sites must be designed and constructed to prevent spills to the ground surface or off of the wellsite. Containment practices must be in place during both drilling and hydraulic fracturing operations, and must be sufficiently impervious and able to contain spilled materials and be compatible with waste material or waste stored within the containment. Containment plants must be submitted to the department and describe any equipment that is to be kept on-site to prevent spill from leaving the well pad. This is written by PA on the federal government. Again, one of those layers. Containment systems shall be used wherever drilling mud, hydraulic oil, diesel fuel, drilling mud additives, hydraulic fracturing additives, and/or hydraulic fracture, flowback, or stored. Containment areas must be sufficient to hold the volume of the largest container stored in that area plus 10%. There's basically four types of containment that we will run into on well sites. The pad itself, it's a large square footage. They measure out from the wellheads to contain the roof or the frac containment, whatever it may be, from the well we measure out, and it's generally in the vicinity of the acre of containment. The entire pad will be contained. They have 68-inch high burners that go all the way around, so nothing can run off if it does hit the containment. Tank containment's a little different. We hold 110% of the largest tank, they have much higher side holes. Those burners can't move in or out, they're locked together. Some are permanent, some are removable. But for tanks, we need to be able to get the tanks in and out, but the burners themselves are locked together. Any equipment that is on the pad, whether it be a generator, sewage driners, those kind of housing units, those are also placed on containment with burners, so nothing can run off. Any chemical, whether it is liquid or dry, is placed in containment, which is usually on two layers of containment. So just a slide here of the pad itself, you can see that that rear is sitting on containment. All the hoses are on containment, all the drill pipe is on containment. The work surfaces are kept as clean as possible so that it's not slippery. There are containment out there designed specifically for traction. This drilling site, as most, are about one acre, like I said. Frack pads and completion sites are a little bigger, about an acre and a half. Next slide. Frack tank containment, this is kind of a general term, they may be holding fresh water, cement, doesn't necessarily mean frack containment, but frack fluids of any kind, but it could. 110% of the largest tank, those containers, the burn walls are metal concrete or plastic verities, and those are locked in, nothing can get out, nothing can get in. Fuel tank containment, as I said before, that tank is a double-wall tank, and that is regulated. So it is basically a tank inside the tank. If that diesel tank were to leak, it would catch itself in the second wall. If it happens to breach the second wall, it goes inside that plastic containment. Brine containment, production tanks, those are where you see the steel walls, more permanent situation. If those tanks were to be deemed not necessary or reclamation, they can remove that containment at that time, but it is a permanent structure. Equipment containment, generators, all of your secondary items that may contain diesel or oil. If it can leak, it is supposed to be placed on containment. Even your trucks, when they pull on-site, they're carrying frac fluids, sand, water, whether it be fresh water, when they pull on-site, they are on containment. So chemical storage, if you see this picture here, whether it be a dry chemical in the bags or a liquid chemical in the barrels, they are in containment, which is also sitting on top of another containment, which is being attritiated containment. It is very important to the EMPs and us as well, that these containment practices at the federal and state level have mandated all of this chemicals be stored in this way. So in closing, I just wanted to say that the regulations that are in place by both PA, DEP, and the federal government have taken away the mentality of if it spills, let's clean it up before anyone notices. This has already been taking care of the environmental aspect of the oil and gas industry. The mentality has changed, and we are going above and beyond to maintain containment. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ryan Grove from Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project, followed by Jordan Hoover, community organizer of the Mountain Watershed Association.
Good evening. So my name is Ryan Grove, I work with the Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project. I'll be calling EHP just for short, as I go. So I'm here today to talk about what we're learning about the health impacts of unconventional oil and gas development. Once again, I'll be saying UOGD throughout, that means everything from drilling to processing and uniting. So in January of 2014, we began monitoring air quality in homes and close proximity to UOGD sites. Since then, EHP has monitored hundreds of homes throughout Pennsylvania, West Virginia, Ohio, and New York. Oftentimes, air quality monitoring is paired with home exposure.
Sir, can you move a little closer to the microphone? Is this good?
So I was saying that oftentimes, our environmental monitoring and health evaluations are designed to identify health-relevant exposures and to provide warnings and guidance to residents living near UOGD sites. Our goal is to clearly provide steps that residents can take to protect their health. At EHP, we're interested in the frequency patterns of short-term splicing exposure. Using spec air quality monitors developed at Carnegie Mellon University, they create that. We measure minute-by-minute levels of a surrogate emission from industrial sites, PM 2.5, which is regulated by the EPA. We've developed a statistical approach to find the optimal averaging time, which is 15 minutes, and using a 15-minute moving average to determine the baseline for each study. The moving average is to determine the baseline for that study. So the measurements are relative to each house's baseline during non-peak periods, and all instruments are calibrated periodically. Wind direction and wind speed are used to determine the directions of the sources of peak emissions, and a 30-day measurement are used to control for weather variability. Peaking data are determined by calculating a 15-minute moving average and examining the points that only fall above 2000 or 8,000 above that mean. An analysis of the spec data is used that characterizes a 30-day exposure hazard, and there are six key parameters that we look at. These include the number of peaks of PM 2.5 per day, the amount of time between those peaks, the average baseline of PM 2.5 inside and outside the home, and the aggregate level of peak exposures. So from August to October 2015, public sources and online media outlet facilitated an hour of air quality monitoring project designed to use the spec monitors to report real-time particulate matter levels, paired with SUMO cameras to collect VOC levels at five homes located within one-half mile of a developing well pad in Penrath. With the closest home being just over 500 feet away. With a cooperation with Big Tax Energy and public source, we were given estimated date of drilling, fracking, and combustion phases of the well pad refer. Upon completion of the study, EHP had indoor and outdoor spec data from which we were able to conduct our six analysis that I just created. We're told that an article being published by public sources due out very soon will cover and detail the Penrath request well pad study in its entirety. With a limited amount of time today, I won't discuss the entire project, but I'll get into a few things that we need to find. I'll begin by saying that while all of these experienced elevated levels of PM 2.5 were synchronized at the times of drilling, fracking, and combustion, we observed that the most frequent peaks per day of PM 2.5 occurred in the home closest to the site at nearly four peaks per day. And once again, these are only the peaks that are within that 95% of the percentage. Also, EHP observed that peaks occurred most frequently during the cracking and combustion phase when compared to the drilling or calmer phases in between those phases. Lastly, I'll mention that we observed that the duration of peaks in all the homes were shortest during the calm periods between fracking and combustion, and was alternatively the longest duration during the combustion phase, which lasted 24 to a half an hour each peak. So lastly, I would say, when comparing the PT data to EHP's database... So lastly, I would say, when comparing the PT data to EHP's database of all of our monitors from the past several years in the California State, we found that the results are consistent with what we've analyzed from our databases of particulate matter readings in homes near well pads across Pennsylvania, New York, and West Virginia. And in closing, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hold this hearing. I would also like to thank the residents who set up the specs in our homes and allowed for VOC readings. The collection of this kind of information helps us all better understand the air emissions we're exposed to and how to protect ourselves from the worst health risks.
Next speaker is Jordan Hoover, community organizer of Mountain Watershed Association, followed by Gillian Graeber, president of Protect GT.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Hoover, and I'm providing a comment on behalf of the Mountain Watershed Association, home of the Yachty Gany River Keeper. We are a nonprofit, citizen-led, environmental organization focused on protection, preservation, and restoration of the Indian Creek and Greater Yachty Gany River watersheds in southwest Pennsylvania. We represent over 1,300 members, the majority of which live above the Marcella Shale Formation, and many of whom have been impacted by shale gas development. MWA has 169 members who live in the immediate areas surrounding Penn Township, and four members who live within the township. The proposed mineral extraction overlay would create inconsistent land uses that would place area residents, including our members, at an unacceptable risk of exposure to health hazards. Putting residents in close proximity to gas infrastructure increases the chances of pollution-related illnesses and deprives landowners of their reasonable expectation of quiet enjoyment of their property. This proposed NEO would do exactly that. Mineral extraction is an inherently industrial activity, and is allowed within a zone residential district, disturbs expectations of peace, supersedes existing zoning districts, and violates withholding of the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. Land use attorney John Smith stated in his presentation to the Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project that zoning overlay districts are intended to impose additional restrictions on the use of land beyond what is found in underlying zoning districts. An oil and gas overlay district may reduce restrictions on the use of land that are found in the underlying zoning district by allowing more uses to occur in a particular area. If the township adopts this NEO, it would likely open itself up to constitutional due process challenges. A zoning ordinance becomes unconstitutional when it fails to advance a legitimate public purpose such as health, safety, or welfare of the community. One could readily argue this NEO fails on these counts, as well as disturbs the reasonable expectations of residential landowners to be safe and free from exposure to heavy industrial uses. Furthermore, in the case of Robinson Township v. Commonwealth, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court found that all Pennsylvania governments, including municipalities, assume the role of guardians of environmental resources. The government cannot satisfy its duty to protect resources such as clean air and water when it allows polluting industries into non-industrial zones. For these reasons and many others, we strongly discourage the adoption of this proposed NEO. Thank you.
Next is Gillian Graeber, followed by Dr. Robert Powell-Luckman.
Hello, my name is Gillian Graeber, and I'm the president of Protect GT. We are a citizens' group working to ensure that unconventional gas development does not negatively impact the safety, security, and quality of life for people in Penn Township, Trapper Grove, and surrounding communities. Our mission is to lead surrounding communities, because unconventional gas development doesn't just affect one municipality, it affects the entire community. Protect GT currently has 105 members, the majority of which are Penn Township residents. Protect GT started shortly after this ordinance was entered into pending status about a year and a half ago, but I'm not here to talk about the past, I'm here to talk about the future, the future of our community at large. Today, I will be presenting a petition to the Board of Commissioners of Penn Township to respectfully request that the board discard or get rid of the mineral extraction overlay, also known as the NEO. High-volume hydraulic fracturing is known as a heavy dusted process, in fact, is defined as such in the applications that were submitted to Penn Township in November of 2015 by Apex Energy LLC. This petition contains over 800 signatures, the vast majority of which are Penn Township taxpayers, and a handful of others, about 7%, that are not taxpayers but will also be impacted if this industrial process is allowed to happen next to our residential neighborhoods. The mineral extraction overlay is an impermissible use of the township's zoning power. It's a rational scheme that allows for a single type of industrial use in an otherwise non-industrial zone. The mineral extraction overlay will convert most of the Royal Resource Districts into industrial zone, which offends the Investment Act's expectations of the people who moved into previously agricultural districts. The NEO violates our principles of due process, it violates citizens' constitutional rights under Article 1, Section 27 of the Pennsylvania Constitution, which fails to ensure that citizens will not suffer harm to their constitutionally protected interests. What we're asking the board to do is to simply protect our constitutional rights by not allowing this one industry to perform a heavy industrial process outside of the industrial zone. We are aware that the township must allow some reasonable development of natural gas. We hear you when you say you cannot control how the industry conducts business, only where. We are asking you to control where. We're not asking you to change any language in the performance standards, which the industry has commented are arbitrary. We, as a community, recognize that any protection to our constitution and environmental rights is a step in the right direction. We recognize that you are a tremendous group from the industry, that the industry has come in with promises of rewards of that repercussion. We also recognize that once the industry was denied the ability to develop because it did not fulfill the requirements by our laws, they filed a federal lawsuit to overturn almost two years of dedicated work that you and members of the township have done to ensure protections to the people. Unlike the industry, members of our community are reasonable people. We are asking for reasonable use and only reasonable use in industrial areas. I ask you on behalf of the 820 people, plus four more today, that sign this petition not prioritize the financial gain of a few individuals over the welfare of our entire community. Penn Township may be the one municipality in our school districts and community, and you're the largest, you're the heart of the school district, and you must be the leader of this community. It's not the state's responsibility to protect our community, nor is it the federal government's. It is your responsibility to protect the citizens of this community. We, as citizens of this community, will do our part by allowing you to fix this simple mistake and not allowing industrial drilling outside of industrial zones. I would like to add that this has been truly a community effort. I provide the original copies of printed petitions, as well as I will email these petitions to you. You can tell from the images that I'm sitting here today, that a tremendous amount of work from our members was put into this petition, and these numbers are all around the township. You can see that they were hooked out of campus. It looks like the community has really come together, and I'm really proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Next is Dr. Robert Flidwick.
Thank you.
Followed by Tracy Maitz.
I'm a physician.
Sir, can you spell your name?
Yes. P is in all, A, V, L, A, K.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a physician at the UPMC. I specialize in internal medicine. I'm actually a part of teaching faculty, I don't really see patients, but I teach medical residents. I'm designated as assistant professor of medicine. I have a bachelor's science from University of Nevada, Medical Research Institute University. You know, one of my professors is a teacher, I have a review by a record in the course of teaching. And one of the very interesting articles that relates to what we're dealing with here was published by John Hoffman University, in the doubt of the risk of asthmatic disaster patients, the patients with asthma who were close to unconventional gas drilling sites in the western Pennsylvania, and specifically patient population of Dyson Remedy, if any of you are familiar with that, they covered about 400,000 people. So this study included about 35,000 patients with asthma, and it was actually a very long study, it went on for seven years. And they looked at what the effect of unconventional gas drilling had on asthma exacerbations, and they actually wrote this down. They looked at severe asthma exacerbations, which were defined as hospital admissions for asthma, moderate exacerbations, which were defined as emergency room visits for asthma, and molly exacerbations, which were involved with outpatient treatment, corticosteroids, okay? And so, you know, they identified persons who had an asthma flare-up. And what they did was, they looked at what their exposure was to the gas drilling, looked at a couple days before the exacerbation, and they used a mathematical model to determine what, they call the activity level of the well was, right before the asthma exacerbation. And they used different factors, including the patient's distance from the well, how deep the well was, and in the production phase, what the volume of gas extraction was, and they, you know, they correlated this to asthma exacerbations, and they did a statistical analysis. So what it came out to was, they looked at all, and they looked at all four phases of gas development. So it wasn't just a fracking, they looked at the well preparation phase, which involved cutting trees down, moving heavy equipment, and the next phase, and that lasted about 30 days. The next phase was the drilling phase, which is what a spud phase is, what they call it, and that lasted about 30 days. The third phase was the fracking phase, which was by week, and the last phase was the production phase, when they were actually extracting the gas. So each of those phases...
...causes problems with the acidic mine water runoff that occurs in this area from the old coal mines. As if the runoff water is not toxic enough, now we're going to add brine water from fracking to it, which contributed to the Dunkart Creek disaster along the Pennsylvania and Maryland border, where thousands of aquatic life died in 2009. We need to have more evidence that there will be no problem with the old wells due to this new method of mixed mining, mixed with the old mining methods that's used to extract the coal. And I am also concerned with the idea of earthquakes that are known to happen in the process of fracking. On April 25, 2015, the US Geological Survey states that five earthquakes originated in Indiana. And after listening to testimony of some of these expert speakers here tonight, we must conclude one thing, especially when they come here with all the regulations that are in place to protect us. This is a very, very, very dangerous industry, or else we wouldn't need all their protection. This is not safe, by their own words. This community has suffered too long from the effects of coal mining, and just when the coal dust has settled and our lungs can breathe fresh air, you bring in an industry that will get into the very land we're trying to recover. In 20 years, this type of mining will be tapped out, but what will they leave behind? Penn Township will be one giant brownfield, your tax base will be gone, people moved, businesses closed up. Remove the NEO, and this community will continue to flourish and grow. Keep it, and you've signed its death certificate. We are commanded by a higher power to love thy neighbor. I ask everyone to put your own interests aside, stop looking at your own wallet, and look to help those around you. We will all be better off for it, not only on this earth, but for eternity. Thank you.
Next is Beth Jamison, Penn Township property owner, followed by Dave Stegelmeyer from Marcella Shale Coalition.
Hi, my name is Beth Jamison. I have lived and paid taxes in this township for about 24 years. You could say I have my vested interest in this community. As a matter of fact, this auditorium that you're in has been beautifully renovated, and I know, probably because one of the last times I was here, my daughter played me in one of the high school musicals. I'm speaking today to let this Board of Commissioners know that I am opposed to the process of unconventional gas well drilling, as well as the proposed mineral extraction overlay, which encompasses mine rural agricultural property. We know that unconventional gas well development uses approximately 8 million gallons of fresh water mixed with tens to hundreds, tons of chemicals to crack a chemical well. Think about it, 8 million gallons of water instantaneously becomes contaminated and wasted, and as Apex has told us in many of the zoning hearing board meetings, that the majority of it stays underground. It becomes unusable for public and animal and wildlife use and consumption. And since this water is permanently removed from the natural water cycle, this is bad news for drought conditions. What is the drought contingency plan for these gas companies? Do they continue to frack while residents conserve? How can we even think about condoning such a process? We don't want to look back on this 20 years from now and say, oops, we used up all our water, oops, we poisoned our township. Boldant organic compounds are a part of the unconventional gas well development process. We've already heard from Dr. Michael McColling that toxic chemicals are emitted into the air and even benzene from the diesel trucks on-site. Mr. Hillbrand, CEO of Hoffman-Hatley, stated in his presentation to Penn Township that their biggest and number-one worry was surface spills. You don't have concern about something unless it has a negative impact. And I'm glad that Kristy from Trinity is here today, because she was also at that presentation. And I did write down, and she did mention this today on her PowerPoint, some of the key requirements for well sites for the Pennsylvania air quality included annual recording of actual emissions from all sites and sources. I raised my hand at that meeting, and I said, even the development stage, the construction set stage, and she said, yes. And I said, well, how can we monitor and be able to say what all the emissions are? And when Chris Hatz from Apex said in the zoning hearing board meeting that they will not be monitoring the diesel emissions that come from the trucks. And she said, well, there are other studies that they use for those emissions, not actuals. And I said, that's not good enough. And she replied and agreed, we need to do better. In pre-drilling water samples, Apex tests for VOCs such as benzene, which is a known carcinogen, tonylene, ethylbenzene, and zyrene. Why test for these if there's no possibility that high levels of contamination could occur? Our ordinance, it states for any of the purpose. The purpose of the NEO mineral extraction overlay district is to provide areas for the extraction of minerals as defined by Commonwealth where the population density is low, and significant development is not projected for the near future. Okay, so you're saying that because I live with acreage around me, that that makes it a more suitable place for this type of drilling? First of all, I love property, we love property, because we want a quiet, private setting with the ability to hunt, and the NEO would disrupt this zone's purpose. And I'm not going to repeat, but I'm going to agree with Jordan Hoover and others who say that they are not like you two. And how do you know if development is not projected in the near future? I want to sell my house, maybe the new owners want to put in a bed and practice. So now does the NEO take precedence? Will they want to buy my property, knowing it can be taken away at any given moment? The NEO will devalue my property. I happen to live in Penn Township, border state of township, and I am in a radius of maybe a mile, a little over a mile to the Questwell site, the Stewart pad, the Maslow Lane pad, the proposed Bailey pad, drafting a pattern, Whitewell pad. We've already talked, Bailey Snutz talked from the senior council, talked about references to the cumulative effect, so I will go into that, and I will agree with him. I'd like to know that if I heard that there's a brush creek park being developed, how that person on this side of the township gets parked, and I get to be snapped out in the middle of five well pads sites with multiple wells? That's not fair. And I have a vested interest in this community, and I think that as a board, you have to know that you have to treat everyone equitably. Like I said at the beginning, I have a vested interest. Apex does not. In an article in the Pittsburgh Business Times that quotes Mark Rocker, it tells you that Apex is following the mode of other startups founded by execs from the neighbors. Their basic goal is to find a poor project, two or three poor projects, but no more than that, Rockerberg said. Develop them and sell them in five years. The first year is usually the leasing and acquisition, the last is preparing the company for sale, and the middle three for drilling, is how Rockerberg views it. So great, because now Apex is already be ready to think about selling. No interest in our community, except for money. Please, let's not be used.
Ma'am, your time is expired, thank you. The next speaker is Dave Stegelmeyer from Marcella Shale Coalition.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a lifelong resident of Pennsylvania, president of Marcella Shale Coalition. I've worked in this industry for more than 34 years. I've worked in this industry for more than thirty-four years. Six-year residency here in Westmoreland County when I was a consultant in natural gas in the pipeline division. From the first commercial natural gas well in Murraysville in 1879, the development of the Oak Brook Storage Pool here in Westmoreland County, just after World War II. The origin of the Commonwealth played a greater role in meeting our region's natural gas needs as well as the entire eastern seaport's natural gas needs. All the Oregon homes and businesses did during the Cold War, and are modest today because of shale gas development. Here in the Commonwealth, natural gas commodity rates in Pennsylvania are less than half of what they were in the winter of 2008. For those who don't use natural gas to fuel their homes, they also have skin in the game. Why? We all use life-sustaining products every single day that are produced or manufactured through use of natural gas. Just think, all steel, glass, plastics, chemicals, fertilizers for our food supply, powdered metal products, varied pharmaceuticals to sustain life, and nearly one in three electrons produced today are done with the use of natural gas. Without it, life as we know it ceases to exist. The use of natural gas in power generation is also cleaning our air as well. According to the U.S. CPA, we are at a twenty-five-year low in carbon dioxide emissions because of the use of natural gas in power generation. Also, because of the liquids or oil being produced in shales across our nation, we've dropped from more than a sixty percent dependence on foreign sources of oil to less than forty percent, also bringing our crisis down the pump for each and every one of us that drive a vehicle each day, and also strengthening our geopolitical hand as a nation. OPEC no longer has the grip they once had in our nation. Many opponents of shale gas development, some of them with their footprints evident in the development of ordinances like this across our region, have this belief that we can fuel our economy with renewables. When in reality, we produce 1.6% of our power with wind in Pennsylvania, less than that with solar. If we cover every single mountain top in the Commonwealth with a wind turbine, we would produce less than ten percent of our power made from this Commonwealth. I might add with a premium cost of more than sixty percent. In reality, there's no better partner for renewables than natural gas. Gas power generation comes online quickly, it can backup interruptible supplies for renewable energy sources quickly, and frankly, they just don't work without baseload power supplies like natural gas. Many of the provisions being debated in your ordinance tonight have been items of high levels of debate in Harrisburg since the beginning of shale development back in 2007 to 2008. Our industries work directly with the legislature and with the DEP to modernize Pennsylvania's regulatory code for unconventional natural gas development. In hearing some of your previous speakers, I loved how the opportunity to sit and explain to you exactly what that process looks like, it's far from what you've been told. Today, as a result of the modernization of a regulatory framework, the DEP has jumped from sixty compliance inspection staff in oil and gas divisions to over two hundred today. They've opened up a new office for oil and gas in Williamsport and added staff to police our industry. The DEP has done this through permit fees, has gone from a hundred dollars a well permit to over five thousand dollars a well permit today, a payed ecosystem at the Commonwealth. They've built up their staff due to the six million dollar carve-out in Act 13, revenues directed fund the agency. As many of you know, Act 13 had three primary focus areas. The first was the impact fee itself. Westmoreland County and Penn Township have been direct beneficiaries since the enactment of 2012. The county portion of the impact fee collections has topped 7.6 million dollars, while Penn Township's portion's been nearly 231,000 dollars since 2012. While some may say that's not enough, I would add if those tax collections go to the general fund, your opportunity to see that kind of revenue will be long gone. And I may add, further resistance to natural gas development in Penn Township will throw the collections you're already receiving in Act 13. Second, Act 13 addresses local uniformity, basically to set common center rules across Pennsylvania to make sure there are high standards of development across the entire Commonwealth and not just areas that has zoning like Penn Township. Most importantly, it would have avoided every municipality setting separate rules for development of natural gas, much like we're doing this here. Some would accuse the industry of trying to cut local governments out of having a say, but in reality, the reason for the approach was to set a high standard of conduct broadly across the Commonwealth. Of sixty percent of Pennsylvania's 2,600 local governments in our state, especially rural parts of our state, have no formal zoning whatsoever. And the most important area I'd like to discuss tonight is the heightened standards of development that were established under Act 13, many of which you've intended to rewrite in part of this ordinance. The state has to staff the technical expertise to understand natural gas development, how to staff to police it, and properly permit the activities across our Commonwealth. Local governments are not staffed and are ill-equipped to technically manage the kind of ordinance you have attempted to write. And many of the provisions you have attempted to rewrite are already established in Act 13. Pennsylvania already has established setbacks, five hundred feet from an existing building, a thousand feet from a water supply extraction point, three hundred feet from a stream or wetland. These are the toughest setbacks in the land at the time of the enactment. These setbacks have protected the public in every single well emergency that's occurred in our Commonwealth. They have been reviewed by an independent third-party regulator group called Stronger, the state review of oil and natural gas environmental regulation, and they have found Pennsylvania's rules to be well-managed and meeting their environmental protection objectives. Act 13 prohibited the development of well and flood plain, required public disclosure of chemicals used in hydraulic fracturing. By the way, a process that's been underway in Pennsylvania since the 1940s, it's not moving. Extending the presumptive liability of a well developing operations required operators to do independent third-party well analysis testing out to a half a mile or twenty-five, a hundred feet from a planned well operation prior to drilling. Excuse me, placed line requirements into effect, set restoration requirements, and public signage requirements for well operations. It required upkeep of retention of records management for waste. It had numerous upgrades on the development gathering pipeline infrastructure, it set air testing requirements for stationary resources and gave a department greater leverage in placing penalties for violations. No industry is under the kind of scrutiny that exists today for Pennsylvania's natural gas industry. The Pennsylvania DEP provides the policing of their own every public activity pertaining to our environment, yet there's virtually no other industry that has a department fully dedicated to this one industry as we have with oil and gas. Further, I just want to add that the environmental rights provision that is discussed in your final page of your ordinance was addressed as part of a non-vining per hour decision in Robinson, and has not been used as a reason to deny development in separate fields in the Crutchford Family Organic Farm versus New Swiftland Township, or in the Brockway Borough versus Flattens Building case in Jefferson County. In closing, I would just add, today you're using this ordinance to rewrite the varied regulations that are already in effect and being policed here in the Commonwealth. Some sixty-nine different rules are already in effect that govern upstream development of natural gas and mainstream pipeline operations. These additional rules are an overstep that will significantly reduce investment in the Penn Township, which will adversely impact the economic well-being of many taxpaying homeowners in your jurisdiction, reduce your impact fee collections, and likely expose the township for further litigation. Thank you very much for getting to speak soon.
Ed Lance, substitute for Mike Hillbrand tonight, he is family in from Texas, I apologize. Commissioner, my background, I've been doing this since 1980. I've built wells twice the depth of looking at here in hydrofract, every state in the Appalachian Basin without incident. I'll comment at the end of this, but what I want to talk primarily about tonight is when do setbacks become exclusionary regarding drilling? Penn Township consists of roughly nineteen thousand six hundred acres. The mineral extraction zone is about eleven, four, fifty-eight percent. When you put the current setback, you have six hundred feet, which is a hundred foot already over what the state mandates, and you add in two hundred foot setbacks from roads, which the DEP requires, three hundred foot from streams, we're down to about twenty-five hundred and twenty-seven acres of the entire township that is potential for drilling. Of that, you can't drill all that because it's fragmented and carved up, you can't possibly put well pads. Now, let's assume that you want to increase that, to pick a number eight hundred feet. If you do that, we're down to about eleven, maybe fifteen hundred feet, or fifteen hundred acres, excuse me, about eight percent. Then again, a fraction of that is only potential for drilling. When you add all the additional regulations that are being proposed in this revision, it's basically leaning towards exclusionary, and it's definitely not uniform. The fact that drilling is a temporary use, which has been held since the Robinson case, not an industrial use, it's there for a very short period of time, and then it's innocuous. These things have been going on in township since 1870s, 1880s. I drilled schools, I have wells next to schools. The horror stories that we hear here just don't exist. I understand that people are unknown, haven't been through the process yet, but how can we say that a turnpike cuts through our township, the debt pollution's okay, or the traffic on 22 is okay? How can we pick one or two where the gas station's okay now, and they're admitting this or that? I feel that we're indeed being targeted. Now, we have outside interests that are coming in from DC, Eastern, PA, they're not man donors, not tax payers, but they're influencing and spreading misinformation. In my opinion, the sole purpose of these people being here is to eliminate drilling in all fossil fuels. If you go to their websites, that's not me saying that, that's themselves saying that about themselves. Their attacks on fracking and groundwater have failed. The EPA cannot confirm it doesn't affect groundwater, number one. Number two, the DEP cannot state that. So that's down aside. Where we will look at next, we can't stop drilling from the groundwater attack, now we're going with setbacks. They're bringing in fuzzy science funding, different studies, some that we debunked in Murraysville to intimate that there might be health issues associated with this. Well, in Murraysville, we invited the regulator for the DEP, Scott Perry, to come in, commented on ten thousand unconventional wells that have already been drilled successfully and safely here. Air is moderate, water is moderate, and these things, everybody's afraid that just don't exist. It's important to understand that. And if he stated it there, we hadn't had enough of borough, he'll come here and tell you the same thing. So, excuse me. Either the handful of antis or people that are concerned, and I understand their concerns depend on, don't mean to make light of that, but for them to be right, every state agency that handles air, water, the geologists, the environmentalists, they must all be wrong for the anti-group to be right. And I just don't believe with that in that as a Commonwealth. We've leased approximately twenty-five percent of your township already. So I have people that we have invested time, money, they're expecting a valuable return on their resource. And I would ask you to hopefully take a look at the real science, take a look at the facts, take a look what's going on out there. The fact that ten thousand wells, eighty thousand nationally, that fracking's been done since 1940, and none of these things that we're hearing about happen. Beaver Run, gloom doom, the world's coming to an end before that start, which forty-six wells out there now, forty-six prime conventional, a hundred conventional wells, that's a water source for these communities. IUP has a five-year study on that showing that it has not changed. I can threaten, I can fear, I can put in the window, but education is the key. And I respect everybody's opinion here tonight, their passion, but their inaccuracy. Statements that I hear about subsidizing the industry through, you know, coal lines, we're going to have ground caving in, it's just an impossibility. It's education, and we'll welcome it. And we've done an open house in Penn, we offer to do another one here at the school and teach and answer questions, it has questions. But gentlemen, thank you for your time. You have a great evening, and once again, I respect everybody's view, the fact that it is totally inaccurate doesn't change. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Burke, Vice President of Huppin' Huppin', followed by Adam Faire, property owner.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners, my name is Paul Burke, Vice President and Counsel of Huppin' Huppin'. I don't live in Penn Township, I do live down the road on Pleasant Valley Road, just a stone's throw from Penn Township, so I'm quite familiar with the area, and do enjoy pizza sandwiches every once in a while. I wanted to talk to you tonight about some of the specific provisions that are in the PPGO ordinance as they pate to oil and gas development here in Penn Township. I want to focus on Section 190 and S 641. This section, the proposed amendment, addresses both the farmers, Pennsylvania oil and gas laws, and the pressure stations. But I just want to focus on the oil and gas well aspects of it. The proposed amendment requires a subsection A, that operators submit a health and safety impact report. Now, this term is, in the ordinance is capitalized, it's nowhere defined in the ordinance. So I think it makes it a little vague as to what requirement myself, my company's operator is supposed to provide. It provides also on there that copies all information submitted to the DAP, required to be issued, so the oil and gas operation permit is submitted. Again, that's a problem with that language because DAP does not have the issue of operation. What DAP issue is a drilling permit, so the language is directly in the ordinance. In addition to what happens for a drilling permit, we, as an operator, have to submit what is known as an erosion of seven inches control general permit number two, and that's issued to the DAP as well. An ESTP two permit requires extensive engineering review and documentation. It costs between seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, and it takes approximately a year to obtain. And that normally occurs after extensive communication provisions back and forth between us as an operator and the department of environmental protection. Once issued, the ESTP two permit is subject to amendment by the DAP if certain concerns were warranted once well pad construction is issued. Your requirement, under your ordinance, is that we provide to lift that actual permit at the time we make application for the zoning, which is unfair to us as an operator, as a business person, because we will have to invest a hundred thousand dollars, and then we may be stuck in a position where we get that permit and the town will go ahead and deny our application for special exception. If the township believes adding this information is important, I would suggest that the ordinance should provide that the special exception be granted subject to the provision of ESTP two permit and joint permit and the applications therefore, if you really need that information. And I indicate, ESTP two permit, which we get from the DEP, is very exciting. It involves an enormous amount of engineering and research itself. You can talk to your development office, I'm sure they've got something in their office already, they're almost a foot thick, all that, all that paperwork. I don't know that you're, at the local level, you have the personnel and the expertise to review all those documentation, all those engineering studies that contain everything. But we'll be happy to provide that to you in a situation where our permit for special exception is subject to that provision of those documents. I would also point out to you that all those documentation, those application documents, are available to the DAP, so that the county can readily, this is a municipality monitor call, that we can access to them, and could do it directly from the DAP as well, rather than having reserve or something like that. Section A1D of your ordinance requires a copy of industry standard health and safety reports for the operations facility listed in the township. We believe that this provision is also vague, and so vague that it literally amounts, because there's no certification of any industry standard, which we as an operator would have to utilize in this situation. There's no definition, there's no qualification for what is industry standard health and safety reports that you're looking for in your ordinance. I believe that my company believes that if the township wants to assure itself that Huppin' Huppin' or any other operator has the authority from the appropriate regulatory agency, the DEP, that the requirement should be that Huppin' Huppin' or any other operator provide the township a copy of the application you submitted submitted to the DAP for the issue of the drilling permit. You'll get that in. Under subsection A1C of this section, your ordinance requires that Huppin' Huppin' is an engineering consultant, provided a signed, sealed, patented certificate of those facility meets all current industry and state standards. Again, I submit to you that this provision is so dedicated and enforceable. Moreover, I conferred with our outside engineering consultants, who we spend almost a hundred thousand dollars on for this permit application, whether they're sure anyone would allow them to make such a certification, I've been informed that no, that is not possible. In fact, I think if you would even approach it, oh, well, outside engineering or EADS, they would confirm that they would be in no position to issue such a certification. There's no other industry that is provided for under this ordinance that has any type of certification anywhere conceiving close to something like that. So I believe it's non-uniform in that occasion delivered. Section A1E requires that Huppin' Huppin' provide a copy of any previous enforcement notice which finds the penalties sensitive against it or its contractors and consultants. Again, this is, there's no timeline on this provision. My company has been in business for over a hundred years. The way this ordinance is written, we would have to provide you any penalty, any notice of violation we've gotten over a hundred years. I don't know that we even have all those records. Secondly, we would apply to any consultants, our engineering firm that we're using out here in Penn Township, has been in business over a hundred years as well. You can see where this would multiply. You can see where this would multiply, go on and on and on. So I don't think it's a reasonable thing to have in your ordinance, and it's going to be impossible for us to comply with. And we want to comply with the ordinance as a good thing. Section A3 requires that company provide a copy of ESTB, well, I talked about that already. I want to also talk about section, or section of the ordinance that requires us to demonstrate we will not violate the citizens' Penn Township right to clean air and pure water as set forth in Article 1, Section 27 of the Pennsylvania Constitution, commonly called the Environmental Rights Amendment. According to proposed ordinance, an applicant, only oil and gas applicant, no other industry, no other business in this township shall have the burden of demonstrating this operates without effect to health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of Penn Township or any other potentially affected landowner by including reports of qualified individuals testing the proposed location without making any impact to the rights under the ERA. I strongly, strongly advocate this position as a section for the following reasons. Definitely added provision, which is only again applicable to oil and gas operations and not any other activities, purports to create legally invalid rebuttal presumption that proposed oil and gas operations violate the township's citizens' rights under the ERA to clean air, pure water, and preservation of natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values. As an aside, I would ask that, have you ever had pure water in your life? Can you tell me exactly what clean air, what causes to be clean air? Those are scandalous stuff by the state, and they should be left in the state. They should not be able to rule them out. Neither the ERA nor the Penn Township jurisdiction, which apparently is suspended by its government, creates or authorizes presumptive oil and gas desolant violations of ERA, and if those seeking to engage subject to you are burned, abused, or compliant with ERA. I submit to you that the first clause of the ERA, if anything, provides citizens' rights against government actors, not against private citizens, not against private citizens like the company and ourselves. At most, therefore, in this context, the ERA may provide assistance to standing to object to its own improvement of the basis of rights created by the ERA. I think that this provision was added with the best of intentions, but I think if you think through the process of what would be the consequence of adding this provision, it's beyond the scope of a local municipal government. And it's, the upshot of this going to be an invitation to litigation, either by developers or by private citizens. And I don't think anybody wants to unduly promote litigation in the township. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Adam Faire, followed by Cheryl Parsons. Is there Adam Faire here? Not seeing him, so Cheryl Parsons. Is there Cheryl Parsons here? Okay, keep moving.
Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Allison McGee, and I live on 1033 Fry Road. I'm here to encourage Penn Township to pass a zoning ordinance that allows for most efficient extraction of natural gas relying completely on the regulations enforced by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. This includes repealing the township's 600-foot-back provision to the 500 feet that is called foreign state regulation and eliminating unnecessary paperwork such as the health and safety report that seems to be nothing more than roadblocks to prevent natural gas development. Unconventional drilling has been completed safely here in Westmoreland County and in Pennsylvania now for several years. Nearly 10,000 shale wells have been drilled safely in the state, and 270 wells have been drilled here in Westmoreland County. Fifty of those wells were drilled around Beaver Run Recipro, the water source for 125,000 people in the region. Researchers from the Indiana University of Pennsylvania have monitored drilling activity around Beaver Run for the past four years and found no impact to the environment. All of this has shown that drilling can be done safely in Penn Township, which we are seeing with Apex Center to start operations. We need an ordinance that will allow this development to continue and allow property owners to access the natural gas they own. Communities across the state have benefited from natural gas drilling through royalty payments, job creation, economic growth, and industry impact fees. Our township deserves the chance to receive these benefits as well and can use sets of new ordinance that encourages drilling rather than spiking it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lee Shannon, followed after that by Wayne Kolsch. Lee Shannon. Wayne Kolsch. And the next figure after Wayne, is Chris Eber.
My name is Wayne Kolsch. I own a family farm on Amelie Road. My family has owned that farm since 1950. Before I get started, I'd like to thank you gentlemen for all the time and effort that you've put in since last winter trying to develop this ordinance. If we compare Penn Township to the surrounding communities, we find out that Penn Township still has a viable agricultural community, in part because of the hard work of the farmers involved, but also because of the agricultural security ordinance and the zoning that's been provided by the township. We have developed farmland that extends from Level Green to Delmar. Family farms have provided the rural setting that has drawn hundreds of families to this township back in the 1980s, 90s, and early 2000s, and will continue to do so in the future if we maintain those family farms. Agriculture and natural resources go hand in hand. Farms depend on income from the commodities they produce, but also from the natural resources that they own. The cost associated with what we do has tripled in the last 20 years. In talking with my former neighbors, we feel that a common sense approach to this ordinance is what is needed. Now, you might say, well, what is a common sense approach? The state shale gas standards provide the outline for that common sense approach. It's been discussed hundreds of times and utilized by hundreds of communities across the state. At the first winter meeting that I attended, a gentleman stood up and said, he made a statement, and this has stayed with me for the last eight months. If you want to see the future of agriculture in Penn Township, drive down Randy's Circle. A common sense approach to the drilling ordinance could go a long way in helping us family farms to survive in the future here in Penn Township. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Chris DeRue. I own property on Byer Lane. My family farm has only been in Penn Township since we bought it from the family of William Penn, so we have quite a long stay here and are truly vested in what is best for this township. Basically, I want to discuss the benefits that Penn Township will receive through a natural gas drilling ordinance that allows for the greatest amount of gas to be extracted rather than one that restricts or even prevents drilling through unnecessary regulations. As numerous other people have stated, it is the purview of the Department of Environmental Protection to make sure everything's being followed. Either we believe in the competency of that agency or we don't. An ordinance that encourages drilling will provide jobs for people of Penn Township and Westmoreland County. These jobs will extend beyond the well pad and will be realized by a number of local businesses that provide services to people who are working there. Penn Township residents will also benefit, of course, from the royalty payment paid from the production of the property's natural gas. In many cases, those royalties will allow property owners to operate their farms or maintain the rural open spaces that we love about Penn Township. Our township can also receive a significant financial windfall from the impact fees funds that would be generated from the natural gas production. I believe the township has already received over 225,000 in these fees over the past four years, while Dairy Township during that same period has experienced almost 2 million. Considering that natural gas companies rebuild roads better than usually how they found them, and these additional funds will then help people to help you all to make another lasting and meaningful improvement to our community. We also should not discount that the benefit of producing a clean source of energy from American soil with American workers. Everyone takes energy for granted until the furnace goes out or until their electricity is off. Our lives run on energy. We can produce it right here by drilling for the shale gas. I encourage the council to adopt a natural gas drilling ordinance that makes the production of this resource a priority. Get rid of the environmental rights amendment requirement, get rid of the extra reports like the health and safety impact report, because again, either the DEP is competent or it's not. It is their purview to regulate. Make well pad applications a conditional use and not a special exception that does nothing but allow for another excuse to stop the development of the natural gas we own. We can all benefit from the production of natural gas in Penn Township. I strongly encourage you to pass an ordinance that allows us to do just that. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Roy Lukart, followed by Pam Lukart.
Thank you very much, I'm Roy Lukart. As you can see, there are many regulations governing the gas well production, local counties, state, federal, as everybody's addressed tonight. To me, it's one of these things, when you have your mineral rights, it seems self-explanatory. There are your mineral rights, you should have the right to develop, provide, and follow existing regulations. Does the township really have the authority to override existing regulations? We all consume energy. Let's work together for a safe, responsible gas production, benefits of solid jobs, economic growth, and energy independence, and national security. Thank you.
Next speaker is Pam Lukart, followed by Eileen Bartolucci.
Hi, I'm Pam Lukart. Need to change channel a little bit. I want to talk about how the ordinance would change our property at a thousand commercial port from business to industrial zoning. We want to maintain our business zoning and the ordinance would change it to industrial. First, I think you have to consider the character of the facility of the building. It's a beautiful stone building, slate roof, terraced flooring. This is not an industrial building. It does not have the ceiling height of an industrial building or loading and unloading ramps or set up as an industrial building. Also, the business or commercial zoning appraisal is considerably higher than industrial zoning. According to a recent appraisal, industrial zoning could reduce our property value, that piece of property, by two-thirds, and that's huge. One of the major values of property is in the retail advertising showcase along the strip and turnpike. This is not a damage to industrial property. The only rebuttal to keeping our properties currently zoned is that it will create a spot zoning. But we have kept, we just want to retain the integrity of our zoning. The township has rezoned the things around us and now want to just put us in that zoning as well. It, I think it's also notable that with all the concern of industrialization and industrial zones, that this would make a consistent industrial zone, and it is right across the street from Planet Homes that has been there for many, many years, and a new Planet Homes that is just going in. It borders now that would be industrial zone. We purchased and paid for a business facility in Anchorage. We have paid substantial taxes as business property. Business property is purchased for financial investment, and after 25 years of investing, now you get to sell your property as industrial? By the stroke of a pen, the township is extremely devaluing our property and our investment 25 years. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Eileen Bartolucci, and after that is Joan Scallion.
Good evening, I'm Eileen Bartolucci. To orient you, I live on Route 130 across from where the old Stanley Electric House used to be. I was here to, you sit down with the petition and all of the neighbors who signed the petition. I brought a copy of the petition, again, you all have the original. You were trying to rezone as commercial, we're asking you not to do that. You want to remain residential or agricultural. I really don't know what the elements of the...
Now, can you step a little closer to my microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, we would like to stay what we are or whatever the new zoning is close enough to residential or a neighborhood. We all take care of our houses, look after each other, talk to each other. We're asking not to be rezoned. And I have a second issue I'd like to bring up, and I don't even know where this is in everything that's changed in the zoning. Where I live, I own approximately 140 some acres of agricultural land, and that MEO, that mineral extraction overlay is on my land. Now, I don't, I don't know how that got there, I never asked for it. I'm asking you to take it off. Why? To be blunt, I've been harassed by landsmen coming and wanting me to sign contracts. They're popping up at my door day and night. There's actually a sign on my back door, and there are people here who know about this. It says, if you care about gas well drilling or lumbering, the answer is no, double A. Now I get letters saying, oh, by the way, we saw your sign, fuck. I have my reasons for not wanting drilling done, but I would appreciate, I don't know what the rules are, but if you could take that off, I would appreciate it. I'm tired of being harassed. Thank you.
Next is, next speaker is Joan Scallion.
Hello there, I'm Joan Sheldon. I've lived in Penn Township for over 50 years. Everybody came here with everything printed up and needed as they need. And my thing is, I grew up in Rankin. I can tell you about industrial, I can tell you what happens on industrial farms. I moved to Riverside Drive in Claret because it was country and liked kids to grow up there. It's strange to see such a poor turnout of people for something so serious in our township. Okay, the farmers are saying it's mine, I want to let them have it. I don't disagree because it's theirs, and they can make money and they can profit to record. But why should my property value, and that's what mine has been invested in, go down the tubes just so somebody else can be pleased? You gentlemen... You gentlemen have been called incompetent, you have been threatened to be sued, and yet these people stood here, bald-faced flyers come out, maybe some told the truth, I can't tell. All I can tell is something from the heart. Penn Township is special. We're not just any place, we're not Delmont, we're not over there, we're special, we're people that work together. If we have a problem, we all come together. And all I ask you new gentlemen to do is to use your heart, pray to God, and see what answer you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Brassar.
Brassar.
B, and then the B R A S S A R T.
R A S S A R T.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Karen Brassar. I actually live at twenty-one hundred Clara Jelly Road, which is the exact address of the proposed white pad where they want to put five, drill five, what wells. In my opinion, even if this fracking was as safe as a release of butterflies, I still don't want it in my backyard. We moved here because it was rural, that's what it is known as, I don't know how arbitrarily you can just say, well, it's no longer rural, we're going to make it industrial just to, so outside people can come in and make money. The other thing, you know, they, they talk about, oh, well, it's safe, it's safe, that's fine, but what about our rights to natural scenic and aesthetic values, which is why we bought this property? There are multiple species of wildlife on our property. When we went to the zoning board and asked if they've done studies on the impact on the natural wildlife, the fish, the birds, the deer, all the animals that are there that we see every day, they said, oh, they're not required to. So they can come in and drill and drive all the wildlife away so we can't see it and enjoy it anymore, and nobody even brings it up. I mean, that's why we chose to live here in Penn Township and bought this house for our requirement, and now they just want to take it away. Like I said, even if it's as safe as, as anything, we still have to put up with noise twenty-four hours a day, trucks rumbling by all the time, on a little tiny narrow road, Wishy Run Road, I'm sure you've all driven on it, that is a very small road, the school buses travel, and that they want to share with these trucks hour, all day long, twenty-four hours, the light up there, keep disturbing us, and then they say, well, it's not, it's not industrial because we go away. They, they do the major part those way, but it's still there and it's still affected the, the trees that are going to be chopped down, and the looking at a beautiful cement well pad in your backyard. So I just want to say, please reconsider this, that we really don't want dr, drilling in our backyard. Thanks.
The next speaker is Chris Masia Nkonye. So when you, so when you come, before you start, just for the court, just give your study inform, please, in the microphone.
M A S C I A N T O N I A. My name is Chris Masia Nkonye, resident of Penn Township. My relatives arrived here about the turn of the century, Italian immigrants came here with nothing, very poor, all they had was a strong work ethic, that's what they did, they worked hard, they worked the most difficult job you can imagine, like my neighbor's at the time, and they scrimped and saved in nineteen thirty, they bought a small farm in Penn Township, they became landowners. That's the farm right up there, me and my wife and my three kids. We take care of it, we take care of the land, and I'm here to support drilling in Penn Township. We have a water well, we have an open reservoir basement, and we have a springhouse. I wouldn't be supporting the drilling if I wasn't certain it was safe. I did a lot of research on this, and you already heard, a lot of what I'll try to tell you, but certainly I can confirm, Pennsylvania does have among other countries both stringent environmental standards applicable to natural gas drilling, there's no question about that. The companies that want to drill here, you heard from some of them, they are going to employ state-of-the-art technology, the best technology being used that are in the world, it's proven based on science and experience, to be able to form these processes safely in an environmentally responsible way, there's no question about that either. There's also been numerous studies done by very independent, objective organizations that confirm that natural gas drilling hydraulic fracturing can be done safely. The United States Environmental Protection Agency in June of twenty fifteen conducted a study entitled the Assessment of Potential Impacts of Hydraulic Fracturing for Oil and Gas When Drinking Water Resources. The study found, and was reported widely nationally by Newsweek, the headline was "Fracking Does Not Pollute Drinking Water," the EPA says. The Washington Township's EPA, fracking doesn't harm drinking water, like you'll want to want, and the study's available online on the USCPA website. The United States Department of Energy, National Energy Technology Laboratory, which has a major lab right outside of Pittsburgh, also published a technical report in twenty fifteen on the results of a field study that monitored hydraulic fracturing operations in Green County, right next door. The results-